Work session and town board meetings, could you please join me in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Work session and public town board meetings.
Elizabeth, if you just close the browser that's from the YouTube. There you go. Pretty good. Supervisor back and Councilman McCann are excused tonight. And Councilman Granville will be here shortly. Ten fifteen minutes or so, hopefully. And what we thought we would do is for the work session here, go past the Oleane rezoned. And we'll go on to number two and because I really like Councilman Granville here. When we discuss the rezoning. So number two on the work session agenda is the traffic study and investigation at the corner of Blakely and Center. And I'll just read kind of their findings. The traffic engineering investigation was completed to compare this intersection to the multiway stop criteria outlined in the MUTCD. While the warrants for multiway stop have not been met, the traffic volume warrants are close to being met. Likewise, while the accident history warrant has not been met. This intersection continues to experience injury crashes, therefore, a multiway stop is recommended at this location. And this is gonna happen, I do not have the dates exactly, but I know that there's a sign up already. And I guess it's, you know, it's a much needed thing and it's it'll be best for all. Take a while to get used to it, but it'd be best for all.
We've, we've sent that to Code Red and Facebook and Instagram, so try to get it out there.
Yeah, so. And next on the agenda is the Roycroft easement update. Our town attorney is also unable to make it tonight, but she did want me to just mention to all that the sellers have not returned her phone calls and she doesn't really have any more information on it than what she had. The last meeting, so hopefully in two weeks. We can get that straightened down. Next is some preliminary budget changes. I'll just read these off here below our list of changes made to the preliminary budget. We added the Town of Aurora delinquent water as approved in the ten ten twenty three meeting. Added Erie County Water Authority delinquent water. As approved in the ten ten twenty three meeting. Updated the final tax values received from the assessor on ten seventeen twenty three. Updated the exemption impact reports received from the assessor on ten twenty five twenty three. Added the South Wales Fire District number one adopted budget. And added the Aurora Colgan Fire District number six adopted budget. Jim? We, we let you get half settled here, but we are just starting, we skipped past number one on the work session because we wanted to get your input on that.
Thank you.
Uh, we spoke about the Center Road Blakely faraway stop and we got past that. The Roycroft easement, Bridget doesn't have any further information at this time, so we've kind of tabled that and we'll discuss that at the next meeting. And we're just on number four, which is the preliminary budget changes, which I just read, so.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Certainly appreciate it.
Certainly.
So the budget impacts on that are, we are still thirty six thousand three hundred and sixty four dollars under the tax cap. The A fund will have a two point nine seven percent tax increase. The B fund will have a point four seven tax decrease. The DA fund, which is the bridge fund, will have a five point six tax increase. And the DB fund will have a one point seven three tax increase.
Decrease.
Oh, I'm sorry, tax decrease, I'm sorry, the DB fund will have a one point seven three tax decrease. Does anybody have any questions on that? No, no. Why don't we go back, are you? Set Jim, do you want another minute?
I'm all set, thank you for asking.
Why don't we go back to number one and that way we'll be kind of on the schedule of the works session here, so. This is in regarding to the rezoning of the property on Route sixteen. The planning board got together last Wednesday. Did a very thorough job, very extensive discussion. Came to a conclusion that they recommended to us. I know that Councilman Granville and McCann and myself attended. But before they, before I read what the planning board recommends, I would like to ask our code enforcement officer Liz Cassidy if, if she could just make sure for the record that that four acre parcel or three point five, whatever that is, there is actually a buildable lot with the frontage, with the wetlands, with the setbacks, with, with all of that, if someone wanted to build a house there.
So the area set aside and that's been discussed as a four acre buffer does have approximately two hundred and five feet of road frontage. There is a, when you're looking at the survey, there is a change in the direction of the property line along the right of way. So it's like a hundred and one feet and a hundred and four feet, so there is the there is the required amount of road frontage and then with the area of the lot far exceeds the minimum requirement of, of three quarters of an acre. So yes, if that were to ever be split off, it could be developed as its own individual lot, even with the wetlands on there. Those are federal wetlands and are less restrictive when it comes to development.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just read what the planning board concluded, the planning board recommends that the town board consider a typical site plan and a special use permit restrictions on any future development of the vocal, of the vacant land on Oleo, Oleen Road, SBL one seven six dot zero zero dash four dash two five dot one. The planning board further recommends that the town board rezone the county asphalt plant property at five eighty six Oleen Road. And Tim Stroth moved to recommend that the town board approve the rezoning of the ten acres of vacant land on Oleen Road. Leaving the remaining four acres as a buffer as RRNA and use a special use permit and site plan process for any additional restrictions related to the specific project. I'll open it up to comments from Tim and Luke and your thoughts, and then I'll give you mine.
Well, as we discussed last time, I, I think the, the goal here with the, the property owners is to have this buffer zone. And I do not believe that retaining the zoning is an RNA, RRNA is the tool that we should be using to do that. And the reason why is because, well, there's two reasons really, number one. The applicant or anyone who has that property in the future could come back and request a rezone of that area. And really our decision depends on the comprehensive plan, which at present would mean the surrounding area, whether it fits in, and we would have a difficult time, especially now zoning the, the rest of it is commercial, saying that within that area, commercial doesn't fit. So really that doesn't leave the board to, to, is that stopgap to ensure that the buffer zone remains. So I have no problem keeping it RR in agriculture, but that for me is not sufficient enough to achieve the goal of preserving a buffer zone. The second, of course, key piece is that we've received funding to do a new comprehensive plan. And really depending on what that comprehensive plan says would, would then do a lot to determine what the future zoning of that area will be. So we can expect that there may be changes in the next couple of years to that, that zoning. So my opinion is that we look for a, a, a different tool to achieve the goal that we're looking for now, if we want to leave it zone, that's fine. But I don't think that's sufficient enough for me to get to a point where we feel comfortable that we're going to be able to control that zone and, and maintain it as a buffer zone until the properties of the south ever become non-residential.
And when you're referring to another tool, because in our pack that we have a restrictive covenant, covenant draft, rough draft. Are you referring to something along those lines?
That would work, yeah, that would certainly work, yeah.
Yeah, Councilman Granville, your thoughts?
Um, I, I want to add a little to it, but I agree with what Luke said. But, but to kind of throw out a caveat, the land isn't the town's land. It's, it's, it's owned by a private party who wants to develop it. So I appreciate we do, we may have some tools, we do want to keep a buffer on there, I think. I, I you know, I think the, the, the planning board discussed it sufficiently, but I disagree with them, I think if we are gonna change it, everything should be changed to a C two, even that sort of buffer zone there. Which would give us some more tools to look at in the future. I think as a board, without speaking for the people who aren't here, that we do want to keep some type of buffer in that approximate, I'll say four acre area. That, that is our goal, I think it'd be easier for us to do it as a C two rather than residential. That, that may not be true, it may not be accurate, but I think it's gonna, for the, for the points that Luke made, it's gonna be I think more beneficial for that area and for our board or future board to take a look at if it's owned a C two as well. And not to sort of divide the property unnaturally right now. That is a single log.
And, and again, if we were to take this and say, how do we want to prevent development on that part of the, the lot, we wouldn't say, let's zone it this way, right? So that, that's, that's my thinking, I don't know if Liz has any difference of opinion with that, but
I mean, there, you have, you have tools available to you, I think the planning, the planning board's concern about setting restrictions on the rezoning right now would potentially affect the property owner's use of that property in the future. But you do have tools available if that's what you would like to condition that zoning change. You can use those conditions, you can set a restrictive covenant as a way to keep that, you could potentially even set a timeline on it that no development could occur in that buffer area for a specific period of time. If you wanted to do that, I wouldn't think that would be unreasonable.
But even a restrictive covenant could be, the board sets restrictive covenant, the board could remove the restrictive covenant.
Correct, all parties have to agree, yep.
So if down the road, there was a new project that was residential that made sense within that, that zone. Really, all this is doing is this is keeping it in control of the board to be able to make that decision, so.
One of the things that came to mind the night of the planning board meeting was to zone it all C two. Just a thought here. And put the restrictive covenants on that section. Along with a special use permit restriction on that, but let's just stick with the restrictive covenant for this time with the stipulation that it would remain undeveloped if and until that first property to the south ever was rezoned to commercial, then at that point in time.
You see the property of the south, even the residential property?
Yes.
Possibly zone.
Yes.
Oh, I think we, we want to have both of them, right? Because you want to keep, there's two residential lots there.
Well, I, I personally don't think that the
Second one.
The reeds, the second property down, down to south of this would necessarily have much effect on that because it's, it's, it's up in that, that northern eastern chunk of it up near the railroad tracks where I don't think it would have much effect on, on, on property that we're referring to rezoning here myself.
So I'm, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with that plan because again, we can't predict the future, but if we are with, with the comprehensive plan, it is feasible that the comprehensive plan committee would come back and say that that entire strip of sixteen should be rezoned as commercial, even though it's residential now. And then our zones would be updated to reflect that, to have that entire strip be a commercial strip. And you would still have a residential house on there, but zoned commercial. Grandfathered in, even though that's permitted, right? And then that deed restriction would go away. So I think we would have to put it in, rezoned as commercial and the use of the, or we just leave it up to the board at a future point to be able to do that, one of those two options.
And I think we can do that, and even with a comprehensive plan, it, it can be adopted wholly or it can be adopted in parts, and I'm not suggesting that's the best way to do it in parts. But if that was a section that the, the board, whoever it is at the time disagrees with, said I, we, I would like to keep it residential, commercial. They, they don't have to necessarily adopt that part of the, of the comprehensive plan, correct?
Yeah, I guess my, my concern would be that it's, it's rezoned as commercial, but it's still being used as a residential. Right. In which case the deed restriction would go away, even though there's still a house to the south, I want to protect that neighbor with the buffer that's, that's, that we're proposing, so I wouldn't, yeah.
So at what, what point would it switch over?
I mean, if we can.
To a developable, developable
Yeah.
Section of property.
We, we could do it until the, it's rezoned as commercial and it is used as commercial, if that's possible, or we would leave it up to the board.
Property of the south is, is zoned as commercial and.
And used as commercial, or yeah, right, because, because otherwise it's rezoned, but they're still residential, then we've lost those protections.
I, I get you, I don't know as, we would rezone it commercial without that owner of that property saying, I want this rezoned.
Well, I think a lot of it is, you know, what the comprehensive plan committee decides for that, that area, I mean, it is, it's just a, it's a possibility, right?
I mean, the comprehensive plan is gonna wreck, may recommend to, to zone it to commercial, but it doesn't mean we do.
It's true, it's true, yeah.
Or, or any future board does until.
Yeah. But I, I think that extra protection though, just because again, we can't predict the future, right? So it could be, there is a possibility of having rezoned as commercial and yet the property still being used as residential. In which case I would still want that buffer zone to, to be there. Yeah. And again, right, the, the parties can decide to remove the covenant.
Point until it's commercial, until it's used as commercial.
Right.
Yeah.
Or until the board decides otherwise, right? The board could, could remove the covenant with the landowner also wants to remove the covenant.
Any comments, Liz?
I don't know, does Chairman Crowe want to add in a thought or two, or?
Yeah.
One of the aspect of our discussion, we did talk about that concern you had Luke of if someone comes years from now and asks for that four acre lot to be rezoned. And we talked about the fact that, you know, but one of the advantages of, of rezoning this one lot. You would have a buffer, four acre buffer between them and the next southern residential properties. The next person to do that wouldn't be able to provide a buffer and you wouldn't, we didn't think you would feel you, you or a future board would feel obligated to honor that because it is a different fact pattern. But that's a opinion. The second thing was, I had been to a recent training conference where they talked about comprehensive plan. And they were very specific that, because I did ask a couple of questions thinking about this topic, that in your comprehensive plan, you should not be very super specific about what areas should be zoned what, you can say near this intersection or along this road should be zoned X. But you shouldn't put a map on your comprehensive plan identifying that, and you didn't have to have your zones exactly aligned with that. So that there, that you would say along, I'm gonna say this because that's not, probably not gonna make in the next comprehensive plan, along twenty A between Orchard Park and, in the Village Aurora should be commercial, but that doesn't mean all of it has to be commercial. And that, and that's actually considered, what they were telling me from the town of, the town, the, the town association and town boards is that's considered best practice for comprehensive plans is to be vague on the comprehensive plan, but then be specific on individual parcels on the, on the Sony, so something to think about when we get to that point.
I can, I can see that Doug, however, I just want to, you know, remind everyone if I, like I have to is that some of our biggest problems are properties that are residential buttered up to commercial and, and I think that if we made that four acre parcel commercial now. It might help to eliminate it, not that it would stop someone from building a house on there if they truly wanted to, but they would, they would realize that.
It might help, but the house immediately to its southern would have a commercial zone right next to their house.
Yes, it would.
But if you, if you left it residential agricultural, it would be vacant. And if somebody ever built on it, they would build on it knowing they're gonna meet immediately next to a commercial zone.
Well, and that's the idea of, of leaving it undeveloped until that property to the south is commercial, you would be literally, as you say, building a house in between two commercial properties.
You, you would know it when you, you know the situation, as I like to say, I live in West Falls within shooting distance, shooting sound distance of the shooting range. I knew that when I bought the house, I can hear it inside my house when the windows are closed, doesn't bother me because I bought the house knowing was gonna be there. And so when people complain, I'm like, guys, it was there before me, I knew it, I don't have a right to complain. So those are just a couple of things I wanted to point out that we thought, but we did have a very, I don't think I don't remember you being there Luke, but we had a long conversation and we pretty much went through every different permutation. And there was a lot of different opinions, but the memo is what became our consensus after a long.
It was a very thorough, it was a great meeting, you, you, in my opinion, you beat it up pretty good.
That's what we understood our direction from the town board is to really be thorough.
And really, yeah, my concern is, is, is really that we rezone, we don't rezone that part of the, of the lot. That it's not providing sufficient protection because an applicant come forward and request to rezone as commercial. And we don't have the same ability to say no, right? There are certain parameters we need to be looking at and looking at the way that that part of the town is developing. I think it would be very difficult to say no to having that rezoned as commercial. And that's, that's why I, I want the deed restriction because, I mean, you can have both, I'm not against that, I, I for me, that doesn't matter, whatever way the board wants to go on, that's fine, I just want that extra protection so that the, because the owner is willing to do it. So let's, let's, let's do it the, that way, let's do it the right way.
Yep, the only other thing I would mention that was a big topic of conversation is let's not lock ourselves into a certain plan. Because we don't have a site plan yet, right? We don't know for sure, we know the, the, the owners want to do this. But they don't have to because they're not to the site plan stage yet. And that's one of the other reasons why the town, the planning board was, was leaning towards doing it as part of the site plan, special use permit approvals is because he could go start raising money, something happens next six months a year, and he ends up selling the property to somebody else who has a totally different plan. And anything you do, you don't want to lock yourself into a, into a plan yet, so.
And that is a fair point, I, I don't know how you feel about that, but if we were to rezone, we still have quite a bit of authority to set those restrictions in at the special use permit stage, right Liz?
Yes, we do.
So, so that, that recommendation, we may want to, that's, that's fine with me. So I guess after all this, the rezoning part, right? I'm okay with leaving that R or RA or rezoning it to commercial, whatever the rest of the board is thinking on that, that I don't really have an opinion on. But I do think that the, the request to have the bulk of that rezoned as commercial is something that we really would not be wise to, to say no to.
How does this sound if the two of you are in agreement, because we're, we're just gonna, I'll ask Bridget if she'll draw up, draft a local law and we'll discuss it when all five of us are present next, next meeting. But how about if I asked her if she drafts up a local law with all of it C two? And the restrictive covenants for that four acre section? And bring that to the board next meeting and see where it goes.
I, yeah, no problem with it, but again, it's not our property. And appreciating, we do have some authority and power, but it's not our property and if the landowner is okay with that, then I would say, yeah, go ahead, let's, let's do that.
Okay.
So.
I mean, I
Generally speaking.
I, I really don't think that it's, with all due respect, that it's the landowner's decision because who knows what can happen with this. This will be see, if it's rezoned and if it's all passed, this will be whatever, if we, if we if we decide to make it and agree to make a C two, that's what it'll be.
Sure.
Regardless whether Harrison owns it or, or anyone.
Understood. Yeah, yeah, and I, my, my, yeah, I, I, I think we all understand that, I think the point is certainly as a landowner, you know, he's trying to do something with the property. The, the board can always say yes or no, but you know, and, and you're not suggesting a strong arm anyway, I don't mean to say that. But I don't want it to appear that way in any way that there's a strong arm, it's just you know, I think we've been discussing this fairly back. Discussing this fairly back and forth for quite some time, but yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Absolutely. All right. Well, then if it's all right with everyone, I will uh, recommend that to Bridget that we will, it will be a local law drafted up. With the entire property zoned as C two with a restrictive covenants on that four acre parcel.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we did that one, did you do that? Next, on the agenda, it's work session number five. Which is a uh, special use permit application for a solar. Small solar farm. It's actually a ground mounted solar system. I think this might be the, is this the first one of these we've had?
It's not a farm. It's for a single residence.
Yeah, a single residence.
But the town code requires all ground mounted solar, uh, photovoltaic systems to have a special use permit.
Right.
So this is the first one that we've seen since the code was enacted, yes.
Yes, and this is, one of those requirements is that it cannot be sold back to the grid. Is that right, Liz? I mean, this is only seven and a half KW. It's not huge by any means. Although it sounds kinda big, fifteen panels.
Um, I couldn't say, I don't have my code in front of me, so um. Many times, many times, um, roof mounted, building mounted systems do sell back to, to the grid.
Okay.
So I would have to look and see if that is expressly prohibited from residential systems.
Okay. Well, if anyone, does anyone have any question on this? Because we will refer this to the planning board and we'll let them discuss it and hash it out and. Get their recommendation back to us.
Yeah, I think so. My my thought, uh, looking at the 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 paperwork schematics, uh, it's a very large property. It's on a rural road. And it's behind their house. Um, so it's not that I could tell. I didn't drive by, I don't know if it's visible from the road, maybe the planning board could find out or I could drive by, but it didn't seem like it was something that was. You drive by and you're looking, you're like, oh, there's ten panels there. Um, that don't happen to be on someone's house, so.
Thought it read fifteen panels.
Fifteen panels, yeah.
Thought right there, could be wrong, Jim. But uh. Regardless, we'll uh, refer this to the planning board and 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 get their take.
I think so. Thank you.
I wonder what the the sizes of those panels, because it could be very different. Does that mean the, this, or does that mean the?
I don't know what size they're.
I feel like a football, football field size each for.
Yeah, yeah, like a, not really, no.
Next on the agenda is the um. Government Accounting Standards Board, the Gatsby uh, Agreement. This is done for us every year. Um, these are, these are similar to actuaries to make sure. That our accountants actually use the accounting standards boards, so. As I say, with this is something we do every year. Does anybody have any questions about this? Next is a request from Dave Gunner to put a pickup truck on the New York State OGS midi bid. Uh, you wanna tell us a little bit about that, Dave?
Yeah, Chuck, uh, it's a, it's just a way to purchase uh, vehicles across the whole state. So as I submitted, it shows the specs to it and that gets submitted to. Quite a few people. Um, so I think it's gonna open up, uh, hopefully some lower prices. Uh, the the only downside is. It could take a long time to get it. Um, we're here in about six months, but because. We aren't in a hurry, I just thought it's probably a good idea instead of just doing a local bid.
And part of that is because we're gonna have it built as opposed to trying to find one on the lot that that we can buy.
Yeah, it's it's coming right from the factory.
Yeah.
And it and it will be the right color red.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions?
Chuck, wear that special shirt just as a reminder for tonight. That's the.
It won't happen again.
Next is uh, another request from Highway. Liz DeViso. Uh, to conduct a dog census. And you wanna tell us a little bit about that, Dave, or?
Yeah, Chuck, uh, this will be for the town outside the village. Uh, we kinda rotate it. So we did the village the last time, I think in twenty twenty one. Um, but this was last done in twenty nineteen. Uh, we're going into our slow season for our part time dog catchers, so. This is just a way to give them some more hours throughout the winter and uh, also perform a good function that the town. Uh, has to do. Uh, we will be working with uh, the town clerk's office to make sure that it's uh, during a convenient time period for them, so it doesn't overwhelm them. So instead of like in the past where we do this all in like thirty days, I think we're talking about stretching this out over six months just to make sure it doesn't. Uh, flood the town hall, which it really doesn't matter. It's just keeping track of where you left off, so.
Sure. Any questions? Okay. From there, we'll move into the regular meeting. And uh, we do not have a a. Public hearing. So could I ask for approval of the minutes, the ten twenty three, from the ten twenty three meeting? Can I have a motion?
A motion to approve the uh, meeting minutes from October twenty third, twenty twenty three.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Luke. Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed, motion carried. Next is audience one, an opportunity to address the board on anything on this agenda. If anyone has anything they wanna say. Harrison?
So I have a couple of things technically pertaining to the work session. But uh, one thing that I I wanted to first thank the planning board for. The exhaustive review and different options that were presented. Something that I I think needs to to be considered as part of this is uh, directly across the street, uh, and only in a row. For the property that you're concerned about. Is the Westher lot, which is also C two, right? So, uh, and that, and I also wanted to mention that. Uh, if the entire, you know, if the entire lot is zoned C two. Uh, I did have a chance to talk with Sam Reedy, uh, who is the property owner that sort of wraps around and. Uh, connects with the backside of the property. Uh, his concern was being surrounded by uh, C two. Probably so. I I just wanted to to raise those points again because it really didn't come out as part of your discussion. And, you know, I I um, I think that the. Uh, the process that was uh, laid out for how to move forward with this. Makes sense to me as relatively, you know, well, as an office in this. Uh, but it makes sense that uh. Um, you know, all we're pressing at this point are the ten acres. So I think that in part uh, is. A lot of the conversation time is is being driven by this, the balance of the property, which we're really not seeking to do anything with. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Sure.
Uh, and um, I think, yeah, I don't know if there's any other questions.
I I I think there are, just briefly, um, in in, uh, I don't know what conversations you we've had with him. But uh, one of the conversations that I did have with him, uh, was the problem that he did have uh, with a lot across the street.
Right.
And the fact that uh, the lights are on, you know, and it it creates, as you know, creates a haze and it creates, you know, lighting. Light noise, you know, for lack of a better. And I think um, uh, my understanding is that he's. Uh, not necessarily opposed to what you're planning to do there, but he is. Would be appreciative uh, later down the road if there can, if the lighting issue can be addressed, if there can be that buffer. Uh, that's that protects uh, him to a certain extent from. Uh, noise, appreciating, he lives right next to a railroad track, but appreciating the noise and light and any other type of pollution that, you know. Would would affect any resident, no matter where they lived. So I think that's a conversation I have and. Um, I don't, I don't know if that's uh, something similar or a conversation wise he had with him as well.
It it was, um, he was asking a little bit about, you know, where on the property were we talking about? So I sat down with him and we sort of talked about this. I showed him the plans that we had and where on the property, uh, the the proposed building. Again, this is just for rezoning purposes. It's not the site plan, but where we're proposing to to put this. Um, and where ingress and egress would would be on the property. And it's, it is quite a ways down from their properties, but. You know, living in West Falls and, you know, uh, I can certainly appreciate. That when these residents moved into these uh, houses, they have the benefit of the current property next door to them.
Sure.
And so, you know, we wanna be good neighbors. And we wanna try to maintain uh, that uh. I guess uh, standard of living that there's a cus, that they're accustomed to being next to this property. Uh, which is why we don't have plans for it. Now that said, not having plans for it is, I think, different than. Uh, relinquishing our ability to do anything with it. Uh, so I'm not sure with what's proposed, if that does limit our ability to do something with it. You know, we wouldn't be looking at doing anything with it in the near future anyways, because our focus is on the ten acres, not on the four acres, but. It sounds like the solution we came up with would be a way, uh, particularly in light of the new comprehensive plan. Uh, and that development work, uh, that it might. Uh, maybe even make it sort of a moot point. I'm not sure.
Well, yeah, that that's a a great way to put it. Um, but I think part of the conversation as well. Was the the town board, if you're asking for changes to a property or you're asking to do something. Uh, that's a little different than what it's owned for, that the town board does have some ability to to limit and restrict what's being done there. Yeah, but the discussion is to limit um, significantly what's done on those four acres as well. So.
Exactly, Jim.
Yes, I want you, you should know that. That's that's kind of what, that's what we're talking about. And I appreciate you're a novice and I appreciate you're spending a lot of time and. Answer a lot of questions, uh, but go ahead, Chuck, that's.
And that would be, again, because if it, if it's, if it's rezoned, that's not specific to you. Because you you could, but you will, if it passes, again, go through site plan review and a special use permit and that. Will limit lighting, will limit noise, will limit hours of operation. It will get into all of that. Quite frankly, uh, that's a very detailed, long process. Uh, I've been through a few of them. Uh, it it takes time and all of those details will be addressed.
Right.
And I I think, yeah, we we are balancing the interest, your interests as a landowner. With the interests of the neighboring landowners and the town as a whole, the residents of the town as a whole. And um, in 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 granting the change to the commercial zone, um, where where we're looking right now is that there would be. Significant restrictions on those four acres, that that would remain a buffer zone. Until the board made a different decision or the south side was rezoned as commercial. So that that's the method, I think, that the board has been expressing that would be the way to permit you to do what it is. You wanna do on your property while protecting those southern landowners from designing next to a a commercial zone. So that may be something we wanna talk about separately, but this this would be a significant restraint. You wouldn't not be able to do anything on those four acres. That would need to remain a buffer zone until a different decision was made, so.
Yeah, I think I would want to to know more about exactly what we're talking about and I guess also to understand how. Buffer zones are worked into other commercial properties like Wester lot across the street.
I I was on the board with the Western lot, that we were here with The Rock and uh, I mean, the the meetings are online on YouTube if you do wanna go back to the history. But there was, of course, a a very, very long and and painful conversation about. More or less buffer zones that were protecting the neighboring landowners there. So there is this precedent for that, but um. You know, the town board generally does this as a part of the special use permit. Part of this procedure rather than the zoning procedure. And this kind of got mixed in with the zoning because I think that was your request was to have that zoned as. As R R and A.
It wasn't Western, a different zoning to begin with. It wasn't a residential, commercial. I mean, was, was it different?
Was the old driving range.
Right, but what it was zone, I thought it was zoned differently.
Yeah, then.
I don't think so.
It was C two at the time? Yeah, it was C two at the time.
Yeah, so there was no.
Back then, but.
The, yeah, right. Yeah.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a little bit different because when those neighbors moved in, it was, it was always commercial. And so you can expect commercial to be built. Whereas what you're asking is a change to commercial, which, you know, we understand that, um, but.
And it's really, I'm only asking for a change on the ten acres, not on fourteen acres. So I'm, you know, in my understanding from Liz and the first planning board meeting was that. That's not an unusual situation to have three different zone designations on one parcel.
It happens.
Discuss at the last planning board meeting as well, but I I think before I can say yes to that, I have to understand exactly what am I signing up for.
And again, this is, this is all just discussion. We're we're gonna get into this again and a little deeper. Once our town attorney gets here and the rest of the board gets here. But with the restrictive covenant, uh. At least in my opinion, we have just as much uh, teeth. Whether that's zoned R, R and A, or whether it's rezoned C two, because that restrictive covenant. Will most likely say undeveloped.
So that decision, we're adjourning for two weeks, I assume, right?
Yeah.
And so we're gonna have the same discussion in two weeks, but we're gonna have the benefit of the town attorney and the other board members here as well. So it gives you an opportunity to maybe a short opportunity, but an opportunity to look into it and see, um, you know, have a discussion about what you think is best.
Yeah.
And go from there.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hi.
Sorry. Um, I would just.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Oh, of course, Therese Campinelli, two fifty eight Oleen Street. Um, I would just ask you to continue to keep the um. The other residents of the neighborhood in your plans. Um. Again, I understand that the comprehensive plan may be to rezone as commercial. But I would ask you to consider how that affects the rest of the neighborhood around it and not just the buffering land that is directly next door to it.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll move on. To unfinished business. This is the uh, preliminary budget changes that we discussed in the work session. Can I have a motion to approve the budget changes uh, as listed and as we read during the work session? Uh, can I have that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Luke, second by Jim. Any discussion or comments? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carried.
How would a vote go here? Do we still need three votes to pass an issue or would it be two to one? It's supposed to be three? Yeah, okay.
We agree.
Never had so much power, have we, as tonight, Doug?
Okay, under new business, um, you have a, you have a uh, budget transfer request on your. Sheet in front of you. I would like to ask for a motion. To approve adding five Ls to the agenda, which is a budget transfer request uh, from Tony DeFilippo. Can I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Luke.
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carried. All right. So the first item on our uh. Under number five is the uh, solar, special use permits, solar system for one, two, zero, four Blakely Road. We're gonna refer this to the planning board. Could I have a motion? To uh, approve sending the special use permit application to the planning board?
So moved.
Motion by Jim. I'll second. I'll second. Any discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is the ASP agreement. Can I have a motion to authorize a supervisor to sign the agreement with the Burke Group as stated?
So moved.
Motion by Luke.
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Any discussion comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have a request from Dave Gunner. Could I have a motion to approve putting the Ford 250 XL pickup truck on an OGS mini bid for purchase? The funds for this will be coming from the 2024 budget under DB 5130 dot 217 equipment. Can I have that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Luke.
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Our next is a request from Liz DeViso. Could I have a motion to approve conducting a townwide outside the village dog census starting on November 7th, 2023? The last time the dog census was conducted was 2019. The enumeration will be conducted by the dog control officers and our labors.
I'm going to move that we approve a conducting a townwide outside the village dog census starting November 27th, 2023.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Luke. Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have a request from Liz DeViso. Could I have a motion to promote Colin Boss from laborer to truck driver? He recently passed his CDL license exam. The promotion will be effective on November 25th, 2023. The hourly truck rate is currently $23.98 an hour.
So moved.
Motion by Luke.
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have some budget transfers. These are mostly from fuel and oil to such things as the mobile radio and park equipment and pesticide school and so on. Do you want me to read down through all of these? Okay. Can I have, and this is two pages? Can I have a motion to approve the budget transfers as listed on page one and page two?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Luke. Any comments or discussion?
Uh, Dave, quick question on these. A lot of the, it's a parks, fuel and oil. Is, is the, the price of fuel and oil go up? Is that what the?
Yeah, Jim, I, last year when the gas was $5 a gallon, we put a lot of fuel in there. And if you look at those transfers, the major one was a repair for new injectors on a tractor. So we just over budgeted fuel.
Okay.
Because of the previous year.
Right, thank you.
And we still did it again next year too. You never know.
That's good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is a request from Chris. Could I have a motion to hire Ivan Natapsky? He has a lifeguard, regular part-time. Ivan will primarily be working with East as a coach and a guard. Ivan has experience teaching swim lessons and extensive experience as a swimmer. The recreation department opened the application up for this position for a month and did not receive any applicants from residents if approved. The first day would be the day they are able to sign the papers. Could I have that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Luke.
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Any comments or discussion?
Is it still difficult to find lifeguards, though?
Yeah. Yep, non-residents. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Next on the agenda, this is also from Chris. Could I have a motion to accept a donation of $254.84 from the Kiwanis Action Club to go to equipment for our, the Rex floor hockey program? This donation is to go to line A2005.
So moved.
Motion by Luke.
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Any comments or discussion?
Just a lot of good things about that Kiwanis club. They must have great leadership there because they're really donating a lot to the community.
Well, and just to be clear, this is, this is the Action Club, which is a part of the, of the, but this, this money is not coming directly from the Kiwanis Club. The Action Club actually has their own funds and they're doing their own fundraising. It's, it's truly a wonderful organization, but
That's great.
But thank you, Jim.
You're saying the leadership of Kiwanis would never do anything like this.
Okay.
All in favor.
Can I have a, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is also from Chris. Can I have a motion to accept the donation of $200 from the Rotary Club to go towards bands for the July 3rd celebration? This donation is to go to line A2080 dot one.
So moved.
Motion by Luke.
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is a request from Chris. It's a budget amendment. Can I have a motion to amend the budget lines to represent the increase in revenue and to cover future expenses as listed?
So moved.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Luke. Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have a request from Martha. This is for a payment for the Church Street Bridge. Can I have a motion to approve payment number nine to Fort Albert in the amount of $1,244.55 for professional services rendered from September 2nd, 23, 2023 through October 27th, 2023 for the Church Street Bridge replacement project? Funds will be dispersed from H7 5120 dot 210.
So moved.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Luke. Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And last, five L is a budget transfer request from Tony DeFilippo. Can I have a, this is, this is really just some housekeeping to clean things up here, as Jolene used to say. Can I have a request to approve the budget transfer from Tony DeFilippo as listed?
So moved.
Motion by Luke.
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Under communications, we have the October 23 report from the town clerk, the town clerk taxes, the town clerk water, dog control, work requisitions from the October 23 report, the building department from the August 23 and the September 23 reports, the East Aurora Police Department from the September 22, 2023 report, and the supervisors' report from the October 2020 degree report. This is for board members. Councilman Grandburg, would you like to go first?
Uh, nothing to report. I did appreciate going to the planning board meeting. It was, uh, and I mean this sincerely, it was well-run. It was, uh, you know, chairman gave everyone an opportunity to speak and not only that, but encouraged everyone to, to participate, not just to, to sort of listen. And I appreciate that way of doing things. And it was very educational for me. But, and a, and a topic that, you know, we, we've had some history on it. We know a little bit about too. So appreciate that. I certainly appreciate that there'll be a new board member here next year as well. That it won't be called the junior senator from New York anymore. So, you know, I appreciate that. But that, that's all, that's all you have to report right now. Yeah.
Thank you, Jim. Luke?
Congratulations to you Supervisor Alex Snyder on the election. Congratulations to Councilman-elect Rosin in the audience today. And your election wins. We look forward to working with you for the next two or four years.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. I just have a couple of quick meetings. Jim was out of town here for a little bit, so I got to stand in his place. Went to the Association of Erie County Governments along with Highway Superintendent Gunner. It was a great program. Learned a lot about the, about the things we learned from the 2022 winter season and hopefully can do things a little bit better this coming winter. And also I went to the Department of Central Police Services, which was very educational. I, I have to say, learn, I learned about ghost guns, about where we are with DWI's reduction. And I also learned that I need to brush up on all my acronyms because you guys got a lot of them. And I also would like to congratulate Ray on his victory and Luke, and looking forward to working with everyone this coming two to four years. I like that. Okay. Under Audience Two is an opportunity for anyone to, to come up and address the board and speak about everything they'd like to that is on their mind. Seeing no one, we'll move on to staff reports. Paul, anything to give us tonight? Rod? I guess we'll go with the Councilman-elect Ray. Anything you'd like to say to us tonight?
Let's, it's very interesting you say that because we've talked amongst ourselves and we were thinking that that would be a perfect seat for you to sit in.
Right here.
Yeah, as we move forward next year. Yeah.
Look, we ought to be nice to them now. Yeah.
Thank you, Ray. Doug, anything to add, Chairman? Shane? Dave? Go Bills. There you go, Liz? Okay. Awesome. Can I have a motion to approve the abstract?
So moved.
Motion. Motion by Jim, second by Luke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion approved. Can I have a motion to adjourn? I'll make that motion. Second?
I'll second there.
Jim seconds?
But now we need three votes for this, right?
Yes, we do.
I do a brief discussion though.
Motion to approve.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?